On this great day of the ninth of September of two thousand and twenty five. I'd like to excuse. Councilmember Pulver from personal attendance, he's online with us. And Councilmember Severing is on his way back from a family vacation. So he won't be joining us this evening. Because of that, I think we'll ask Councilmember Watson. If she would lead us in an invocation or thought at her choice. And then followed by leading us in the pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Watson?
Thanks, I'll give an invocation. Father in heaven, we pray at this time for. Understanding and a listening spirit as we gather together tonight and try to see what's best for the city and research and. Be willing to work together and understand well the needs of the community and the citizens. We pray that thou will help all of us to be civil in the way we communicate and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Watson. We have a presentation tonight. I'm sorry that Councilmember Pulver is not here as he's been anxiously. Awaiting this, but I'm sure he'll play close attention online. Have Corey Cox with us. He's the Director of Legislative and Government Affairs of Utah Retirement System. So Corey, would you like to? Share information with us? You can sit there and just speak into the microphone, please.
Thank you so much for the invitation. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today to talk a little about some of the funding. I was asked to talk a little about the net pension liability that comes in the financial report that you guys have to report each year. And. There were some questions as to why it keeps going up and down and. So I'm gonna kind of go into some. Some details, some dirt here a little bit. It's gonna get a little dirty, so. If you have questions, I'd love to be able to answer those as well. So that's, that's what I want to be able to do for you. So I wanted to start out. Just by. Showing, I don't know if this is coming up.
There it is.
Okay, just by showing a reservoir, okay? I think a lot of us are familiar with. How reservoirs work, right? The idea is that we have money or water stored for future use for our communities. And we kind of have the same idea with our pension system, the pension fund at Utah Retirement Systems. Each of your employees have an opportunity to participate in the. In the. In Utah Retirement Systems and the majority of them. Participate in the pension or the defined benefit that we offer. And the way it works basically is this big pool of money. It's a big trust fund, right? It's held in trust professionally managed and invested. And in this big reservoir. And the idea is at the end of the career, we're able to pay out those benefits. Defined benefit to each, each of these individuals, a monthly paycheck, basically, right? And so what's happening now, the idea is that we're trying to pre-fund all of those benefits to make sure we have enough in the account. So that we're able to pay out those benefits at the end of the career. And the way that happens is through. Your contributions, through employer contributions, right? As a city for all your employees. In some cases, there are member contributions, so the individual that will receive this benefit down the road. Has to contribute as well. That's a small stream. And then. All the runoff, all the rain, all the snow, whatever you want to call it. We actually do have investment returns that actually make up about two thirds of our fund overall. We're about forty, at the end of two thousand and twenty four, we had forty eight billion dollars in our pension fund. And currently it's sitting just over fifty billion. Based on what we're seeing with the earnings so far. So it's a rather large fund. And I know I'm going into some, some high level details, not necessarily related to you, but I'll get back to you as a city on how this works, okay? So what we're trying to determine is those payout of benefits, right? So what we do, what happens with each individual, they incur a liability to the system. And whether that's funded, that liability is funded or not, is dependent on how much, how much is in this reservoir, right? And to determine that liability. That's out there, we, we have to look at basically each individual member. We have actuaries that help us determine what. What, what the probability is of each member reaching retirement, how long they're gonna work. How much the benefit's gonna be that they're gonna receive and how long the benefit will be paid. What level colas over their lifetimes, over their careers will be paid, what investment earnings are we gonna receive? We look at the overall payroll, so what the employers provide in contributions as well as the employee. And we look at a big picture. So basically, if you take someone that's hired at age thirty. Are they gonna make it to retirement? Or if they're, if they are, great, how much of the benefit is gonna be received and how long are they gonna live, right? And so what we do is to, to project out what this liability is gonna be is we make some assumptions, our actuaries make some assumptions. There's economic assumptions and demographic assumptions. And each of these assumptions are a little bit different, right? But we, we look at how much are we gonna earn in investments? What's the market look like? We make, and I'll talk a little bit about our investment. Return assumption that we make, our discount rate that we use. Cause that had some, some, something to do with some of this up and down on the liability that we're, we're talking about. Inflation plays a role in this, right? Demographic assumptions such as mortality rate. How long people are gonna work? Their retirement rates, their salary increases, all of that plays into demographics. And then we also look at some different methodologies such as. How much we're amortizing, how long we're gonna amortize it if we, we have an unfunded liability. And some different methods that we use to project those, those liabilities. So this is kind of an overall picture for Utah Retirement Systems, okay? Right now, and as of the end of two thousand and twenty four, our fund was, depending on how you look at it, on an actuarial basis. Which is a smooth, smoothed out basis, basically smoothed it out over a five-year period. To make sure it's not going up and down, up and down every year. And that's how we determine our contribution rates, how much you're required to pay on your employees. That currently is sitting at about ninety five percent funded, okay? When we take a snapshot in time, this is the market value. And this is what the, the net pension liability that we report to you, the GASB sixty eight. Pension liability, that is reported on a market basis, okay? And we're sitting about ninety four percent funded on that overall, okay? And that's for all the systems combined. Now, what we're talking about here today is this net pension liability. Given that background, okay? This was actually a reporting requirement that was started in two thousand and fifteen, and a lot of this had to do with some of the, the retirement systems. That. Weren't doing so well. Utah, Utah Retirement Systems, we're in a pretty good position. We're in pretty good shape. We, we feel pretty comfortable where we're at. And, and we feel like we're on a good trajectory to make sure we're gonna be fully funded. To be able to pay out all these benefits to the employees, right? But this is a reporting requirement. Again, it's called GASB sixty eight. GASB is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. This is just one of their policies that governmental agencies need to follow as far as their financial reporting, okay? And like I said, this, this started, GASB sixty eight was implemented June thirtieth of two thousand and fifteen. Basically said that every year. In your financial reports and all government financial reports, they have to show what their net pension liability is. And so what we do at URS is we send you. Basically, a, a letter with some documentation showing what your net, your proportion. Your share, your proportionate share of the liability is. And, and really, in all honesty, it's set up so you can just plug and play. You can put it right into your, your financial report every year, so you don't have to worry about doing anything. But it's your proportionate share of that liability that you're able to report. Okay, and again, this is just, this takes into account a snapshot in time. We take it December thirty first each year. And that's what we report is that net pension liability, okay? So what does the net pension liability look specifically like for North Ogden City? And I'm gonna go, this is kind of a, got a lot going on here, so I want to go through this, this chart here so you can kind of understand what's going on. In the blue bars, you can see here, that is the total. Liability or unfunded liability, okay? Or, so if it's above zero, it's a, it's a liability, okay? If it's below zero, it's a net pension asset, okay? Meaning you're, you're over a hundred percent funded, okay? And each of these blue bars you can see is, is a little bit underfunded, okay? And that's, that's, that's where we're at. Since the great, great financial crisis in two thousand and eight, we've been making up a lot of ground to get to where we're at. Again, we're, we're currently ninety, ninety-four percent funded on a market value basis, which this, this report's on, okay? But you can see each of those that, that's, so in two thousand and eighteen, you were about twenty-two, two point six million dollars, had a two point six million dollar liability. In two thousand and twenty-one, you actually had about one point six million in assets. And then as of last year, you were about one point six million in, in liability again, okay? You can see that. You're, you're kind of up and down, all right? A lot of that comes down to our returns on investments, okay? And you can see that light blue line there is our annual return on investments, okay? So in two thousand and fifteen, we, we were just barely under zero. We, we, we just barely missed going positive on that one, that year. But you can see in two thousand and eighteen, we lost some, some funding and that's, that's why that liability went up in two thousand and eighteen, part of the reason why that did, okay? In two thousand and twenty-one, you can see we, we had a gain of seventeen point three percent, okay? That was a really good investment year for us. And so that, that's what contributed to that hundred and five percent funding level, right? Or the assets that we had, and in particular in North Ogden City, okay? In two thousand and twenty-four, this last year, we, we, we were just over our discount rate, our assumed rate of return. At seven point five one. But you see it grew and, and I'll explain why here in just a minute, okay? Part of some of the growth also in the liability, what we've been doing over the last decade. Actually, really over the last fifteen years is we've been making some changes to make our, our assumptions a little more conservative. Which has contributed to the liability increasing a little bit, okay? You can see in two thousand and fifteen, that discount rate was sitting at seven and a half percent, okay? We're at seven and a half percent. You see it, it goes down over time. We actually lowered our discount rate from seven and a half percent down to six point nine five percent. And then again, and this is where it currently sits, is at six point eight five percent. So we're assuming we are gonna earn six point eight five percent every year on investments, okay? If we don't meet that, the liability goes up, right? If we. Achieve that or go higher, typically it'll go down, okay? The liability would go down, okay? But because we were lowering those rates, the liability did increase. And so that's why you see some of that increase in twenty, twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen. Because we lowered those assumptions in those years, okay? Those, that discount rate. The last thing that I wanted to show, in two thousand and twenty-two through two thousand and twenty-four, we saw an increase, even though we met. In twenty-three and twenty-four, our assumption, we, we actually exceeded our assumption, our investment return assumption. We've been seeing some really interesting things happen with regards to employee pay overall throughout the, the state. It's actually a national thing that's been happening. We are assuming that in cities, there will be approximately a five percent increase, okay? Actually, it's four point three percent overall, okay? And I'll show a graph here kind of illustrating what's been happening, but in, in local governments throughout the state, we assume about four point, four point six percent increase, okay? Every year. The last several years, we've exceeded nine, ten percent. Last year it was six point six percent. And so that does increase our liability because people are gonna end up with a higher benefit down the road, right? And so that, that's what, what's happening. And, and contribution rates in some of the systems are actually reflecting that, some changes to that, okay? Before I go on. This is a lot of deep stuff, I know. But before I go on, are there any questions that I can answer for you?
Just, just one thought. It seems like to avoid these major up and downs, there's been. An extension of the ability to amortize like service costs and things like that. I think that's why we were surprised that our liability changed so much.
Yeah.
Is because instead of looking at it year to year, it seems like they were trying to smooth out the, the effects. So I think that was where we were surprised is it hit us.
Yeah, yeah. So, so when we do the contribution rate. Adjustments, if there are any contribution rate adjustments, we are smoothing that out. To make sure you're not having to. Put more in contributions every year, right? So you're not having to porpoise or, or do anything like that. We want to make sure that, especially for cities, we recognize some of these budgets are tight, right? And so what we've done, and, and this was done back in two thousand and one, is, and, and I'll show here in just a minute. What's, what we've done is we can actually, the statute says that we can hold our rates. Up to a hundred and ten percent, okay? Up to hundreds, until we hit a hundred and ten percent funded, then at that point that we can drop our rates, okay? And the reason for that is because, for example, in two thousand and one, we, we decreased rates by like three percent. Because there were some things, some good things, I mean, you have the IT boom, right? And. In the, but we saw that there was gonna be a recession and that we were gonna have to kick up those rates again. And we didn't, we had to do that. But in two thousand and one, the, the legislature ended up changing that policy a little bit for us so that we could make sure we could smooth that over time. Okay, and, and mind you, this report. This GASB sixty eight report, it just goes in your financial statement. It doesn't affect, I, I know it affects your liability for reporting purposes, for your, your ratings, right? It can, it can do that. But in general. Where, where we sit in general, we're, we're in pretty good shape. From a national perspective, okay? So let me just, this, this is just a chart and I, I won't go into a lot of detail. But over the last three years, that's our top three lines. For what salaries have looked like overall throughout the state, okay? The red line is our assumption. This is on a year-to-year basis for those that have one year of service, two years of service, up to thirty years of service credit in the, in the public employee system. It just shows, it goes to show how much this, these salary increases are an anomaly, okay? It's a good thing the employees are getting salary increases, but again, for us, it is an increase in benefits and so we have to account for it. And this is just a, a little bit. I mean, in three-year periods and you can see the blue line, the top line there is the last three years, twenty-two through twenty-four. And the red line is the assumption that we're using, so. Pretty, pretty big jump there, okay? It's not gonna last forever, we recognize that. It's just not sustainable. Of these salary increases and so those liabilities, they might. Hit a, hit a point because of the salary increases and then start coming down, right? And so those liabilities will start coming down once, as, as long as the market does good and other assumptions look good. It should, we should see those liabilities start dropping again, okay? So that, that's kind of the story of URS's reservoir and the net pension liability. Now, let me show you how this applies to you, okay? I know that was something that goes in, into this. Again, I mentioned that this goes into a little bit of the contribution rates and how. How much you're gonna have to pay in contributions for each of your employees, right? Right now, because of the great financial crisis back in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, we put in place some mechanisms. We, we had to increase our contribution rates. How much is being paid towards the pension by the employers, okay? We've amortized that over time. So what we've done is we've actually put together a contribution rate management plan. To make sure that we don't have to keep those as high. If we kept the rates really high. At some point in time, and even if we hit that hundred and ten percent funding level, if we kept those rates high and got to that hundred and ten percent. Funding level, we'd see a big drop off in the contribution rates. Towards pension system. And we're talking. Five, six, seven, potentially ten percent drop off. And so what we would be saying here is, here's all your money, now figure out what to do with it, right? That doesn't seem very, um, responsible on us as a fiduciary, right? So this is why we've developed this contribution rate management plan. So that over time, we are smoothing out that, those decreases in contribution rates. As we get closer to that hundred percent funding mark. And over the last. Over the last five years, we've actually, or last four years, we've actually decreased the rates for you as a city. For your local government employees, public safety employees. By two and a half percent and one percent respectively. We've got another one percent drop coming up, beginning July first of two thousand and twenty-six preliminarily. And another half percent drop for the public safety folks. So overall, we're dropping those rates, we're starting to drop those rates because you're getting to a point in funding level. Where we're seeing a light at the end of the tunnel, I guess, is what it comes down to, right? So that's, that's how that's applying to you, these net pension liabilities. I know it seems like it's going up and down, but that's because it's a snapshot, okay? We're smoothing that over time to come up with these contribution rates over a five-year period. And. That's where we're at, ninety-five percent funded on an actuarial basis, that smooth basis, okay? Are there any questions? I know that's a lot. It's probably, your mind's probably.
Hey Mayor.
Councilmember Pulver?
Of course I have questions, so. Because I'm the doofus that actually asks questions to begin with, but. Anyway, so I guess the, you know, just deep diving on budget stuff and all these other things. You know, I know we do for, the city does for 1K contributions. I guess you kept saying city contributions and I guess. For the pension itself, I'm kind of, maybe I'm just not understanding where it comes from, you know, and, you know, the. It's, you know, you were talking about pre-funding and stuff like that and I was like. I do not know or understand what that means to us as a city when we're talking budget-wise, what, does it come out? Or is it, I don't say made up number, but is it a number that? Sometimes may or may not happen, or is it a number that, you know, basically has to be done in the overall accounting system to balance things out? I guess, so my question is, is it something I need to worry about on a year-to-year basis?
Yeah, so basically the contributions, the way that's happening is every pay period, you're reporting to us how much your employees are making. And you're putting in a percentage of their salary towards the pension on their behalf. And so that's part of their total compensation package, right?
Okay, so that, that comes out of the salary and benefits then, so it's a number that's already embedded somewhere in the budget, okay?
Yep, yeah. So, but this net pension liability is a report that you have to show on your financial statements, right? And to kind of understand why this is where it's at, that, that's what I've been trying to, I guess, hopefully explaining. I know it's, it's deep.
Yeah.
Just to try to simplify that, not that this has ever happened, but the, the state decided they were gonna terminate the pension plan. They weren't gonna have a pension plan anymore. And it was underfunded at that time. They would go to each city and say, hey, we need your money.
Right.
Not that that would ever happen. Now, in. Private enterprise, it's happened a lot. They've terminated pension plans. In fact, most. Private employers. Of either froze or terminated their plan. In some cases, they were overfunded and gave money back to the employees to put in their 401K, but. What, what that liability is, is if it was, today was the end of the world, so to speak, and they needed money. But it's, it's not bad because I remember back in two thousand and twelve, maybe? The pension plan was six and a half billion dollars underfunded.
We, we lost six and a half billion dollars. And, and yeah, we were, we, we were at that point in time about sixty-nine percent funded.
Yeah.
On a market value basis. And so what was good, that great financial crisis actually, I think was. An instigator to this GASB sixty eight, especially for those systems that are struggling. Those states that don't pay into their pension fund like they should. It's, it's helping be transparent with the public as far as. Where, where the pension fund stands, how much they're having to contribute, what's, what's going on with the pension itself. To make sure that they know that, hey, they're not doing their part as, as a government. But for us, we are, the state, all the local governments here in Utah are doing an awesome job and making sure we're being fiscally responsible. And we're conservative in how we do that.
Yeah, but sometimes councils don't consider the. Extra, not extraordinary, but the other costs that are associated with salary adjustments.
Right.
Yeah.
Is it probably the last five, highest five? Is that what the state is?
So for some, for some of the legacy employees, the employees that have been around since twenty, before two thousand and eleven.
Yeah.
It's actually the highest three years of service that, that counts for. For those after, it's the highest five, yeah, so.
That's the Dan Little and Quest change in the, the plan. Any other questions?
Peter Brown has his hand raised on the.
Peter?
Can you hear me?
We can now, huh?
Thank you. Great presentation. I just wanted to, yeah, Councilmember Pulver, way this works is. When we do budgets and stuff, the. We should take into consideration, we know we're gonna have changes in the URS contribution rate. And that gets tweaked and adjusted on the, the employee benefits line. And, and so that gets taken care of there. Recognize though, one thing that, that can be kind of challenging, I think, at least that I've seen, is that they just recently. Sort of, we, we, we have to pay for the whole thing, but employees. Particularly the non-contributory tier two, the ones, those that he talked about that are after that, kind of that later. Twenty-eleven timeframe. They have to put in a, a little piece of it. It's, it's not a lot. It comes out to be somewhere between like. About five and. Eighteen dollars a, depending on how much they get paid, a pay period. The other question I had for the URS guy is. Some employees ask why it's only those. Non-contributory individuals. Why isn't it, doesn't it relate to everybody having to put in? A percentage? And why did this legislature force entities to? Pull that from employees and not allow the employer to just cover it all? Does he, do you have a quick answer on that?
Yeah, so, so back in two thousand and ten, when this legislation was passed, they purposely put on. So we were actually non-contributory in the legacy system, meaning that employees don't contribute, right? That's non-contributory. But the tier-two system was set up to be a contributory system, which means that employees could be required to. which means that employees could be required to contribute. And so what they actually did is, um, Senator Lillenquist in particular was really concerned about employer liabilities um, in capping that cost for employers at ten percent. Um, and at the time it was twelve percent for public safety. So public employees were ten percent. Public safety was twelve. Um, and uh, so, so it was really about a, capping the employer liability and, and making sure the employees had skin in the game. We were actually one of the very few throughout the country that was in a non-contributory system, had a non-contributory system. Um, I think I knew of two others that were non-contributory before. And so basically this is, this is how, how pensions are set up nationwide where employees may be on the hook. It's a policy call. I'll just say this, it's a policy call for the legislature. The legislature is made to prohibit what we call, and, and this is a technical term through the IRS, um, for employers to pick up the contr- the member contribution for the public employee side. They allowed for public safety to have it when they changed the system back in twenty twenty. But for the public employee side, they cannot pick that up. So I hope that answers your question.
I think we just picked up, John, didn't we, two and a half percent for the police last year?
Um, in the, those contributory, we instead of covering it, we increased their salary that much. Yeah.
So.
That, that helps me answer employees that uh, will say, it's not fair that I have to pay point seven percent of my pay every week. That helps me understand. Thank you very much. Yeah.
Well, I, I think, you know, that, that cap, it's not the city that plays it.
Right.
Is the taxpayers.
Yeah, it is.
Right? And defined benefit plans are extremely expensive. And basically it's only public, it's government basically that still has those. There's a few sprinkled out there, but it's a very expensive benefit. Not to say that people aren't entitled to it, but it's, it's, it's expensive versus a, a uh, a defined benefit versus a defined contribution. Um, so I think that's when the legislature looked at that and saw what it was causing cities to do and the, how far they were behind in funding it, they, that's when they made the change. So, any other questions? Great presentation. Did council member Dow pass?
Uh, just to make sure I was understanding the liabilities each year, uh, how the last three years have kind of crept up on us. Is that only individual to our city? Or does that factor in all the averages of all the increases in wages across the state? For example, i- if we were to go a year where, say, we didn't increase wages, but the rest of the state does, does that increase our liability because everyone else had done so? Or how does that work?
Uh, so it, it is an average, i- it's, it's what's happening throughout the system. It's not just you. And that's your proportionate share of that liability. Uh, so that proportionate share could change depending on how much your payroll is. Um, but it is, it is your proportionate share. So overall, you can see the funding level on this chart really has actually stayed pretty stagnant, pretty stable over the last few years. We haven't really made up any ground. Might have gone down just slightly, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, but because of the growth in liability, um, so the, the, the liability, the funding ratio hasn't really changed a whole lot, but the liability has grown. And that, that's what's happening here. Um.
What are the proportionate things to council member Dow has this point? Is it just uh, our proportionate share of the total salaries? Is it our length of service? I mean, if, if we've got longer term employees that are going to get a higher benefit, what is the allocation of the liability based on? Do you?
So it's, it's based on the net pension liability, but it's, it's covered payroll.
So it's basically allocated on covered payroll.
Yeah. And right now, I mean, for example, in the non-contributory system, that's the legacy system, the tier one system. Your proportion is three, three hundredths of a percent, right? Um, and that's how big our system is. The public safety tier one system is, um, sorry, three thousandths of a percent. Um, the public safety is nine, nine one hundredths of a percent. The tier two public employee system is four, almost five thousandths of a percent. Um, that's your proportionate share of this. So, um, just to put that into perspective of how much yours is compared to the rest of the system.
Of several billion dollars, right? Any other questions? Councilmember Pulver? Thanks so much.
Yeah, it was, it was a great presentation. Yeah, I appreciate it. It answered a lot of things.
I'm sure you have better things to do on a Tuesday night, but thank you so much for joining us and giving us some insight. So.
Please feel free to call, call me if you have any more questions.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, council, we'll move into our consent agenda. We'll start by asking for any disclosure of potential conflicts based upon our agenda items tonight. Anyone have anything they'd like to talk about? Okay. Uh, we'll move on to item number three then. This is an action to approve the August nineteenth and the August twenty-sixth city council meeting minutes. Anyone have any comments before I seek a motion? Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Okay, have a second?
Okay.
A motion, a second to approve the city council meetings of August nineteenth and twenty-sixth. Any comments or further corrections? All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Move on to item number four now. Uh, Dylan, I think is with us tonight. He's going to talk to us about subdivision. Um, approval of conditional acceptance, I think of the Northview Estates, phase nine, we'll start with.
Yep. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for letting me come. Uh, the first subdivision is Northview nine. Uh, this connects the Cove on Mountain Road to six hundred east. Um, there's a, it's a twenty-eight lot subdivision that was recorded in uh, twenty twenty-four. The improvements includes curb and gutters, um, sewer, storm drain, water and streetlights. Uh, the streetlights and sidewalks are not installed, um, but the streetlight invoice has been paid to the city. We have a contractor working on that right now. Um, just had some lead times with the, with the streetlights to get them installed. Uh, the sidewalk, we work with them as they build the homes to get that installed. Um, all the improvements are up to the city code and standards. And I recommend the approval for conditional acceptance and to start the one year warranty period for those.
Any questions for Dylan? Uh, council member Dow pass?
Just a quick comment. I wanted to shout out Public Works because there was some water that was coming down from lot two oh three during the big storm. Um, and you guys were able to get up there and talk with the builder and get them to create a swell that got that water flowing in the right direction. So I know that's not necessarily applicable here, but it's, it was on my mind and I wanted to thank Public Works for that.
Okay, thank you. All right. Do you have a motion? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we uh, accept, uh, that we approve the conditional acceptance for uh, Northview Estates Phase nine.
Thank you, council member Dow pass, a second to that motion?
Second.
Uh, thank you, council member Watson for that second. Any further questions of Dylan or discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, Dylan, you want to talk to us now about Northview eight?
Yep, uh.
Final acceptance?
Northview Phase eight, um, it's on the other side of the city. It uh, connects one hundred east, uh, up to Pleasant View. Uh, this is a forty-four lot subdivision that was recorded uh, in June of twenty twenty-two. Um, the sidewalk, curb and gutter replacement, slurry sale and striping, um, were all completed as part of the final punch list for the improvements. Uh, the conditional status was approved in April twenty twenty-four. Uh, all the improvements are up to city code and standards and it's the recommendation of our city engineer Eric Casterson to uh, accept these improvements as uh, finally done and to take responsibility for them.
Any questions for Dylan? John, my shell showing a roll call vote. I don't think we've normally done that on the approval.
I might have clicked the wrong box. I could have messed that up.
Um, you're right. It usually is a voice vote. That's something I missed in my review with Ryan.
Oh, no problem. I just wanted to make sure I was living up to your expectations. So. All right. Any questions for Dylan? I'd look for a motion then to grant the final acceptance of subdivision improvements on Northview eight. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, a motion, we approve Northview Phase eight for final acceptance.
Thank you, council Barker. Thank you, council member Pulver. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? All right. Thank you very much. Thanks Dylan for your great work. Appreciate it. Well, uh, now I have uh, public comments, those who would like to comment this evening. Uh, please step up to the podium, state your name if you're a resident of North Ogden. And uh, please limit your comments to no longer than five minutes. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Max Wilson from North Ogden. Uh, good afternoon, mayor and city council members. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak tonight. I want to bring attention to an important issue in our community, the condition of North Ogden Skate Park just up the road. For many of us, this park is more than just a place to ride a board or bike. It's a safe place to connect with friends, build skills and stay active. But right now, the skate park is falling behind the needs of the com- the community. And I believe it deserves lights and some much needed revamping. First, the lack of lighting limits when the park can be safely used. During much of the year, the sun sets early and that means young people lose a valuable outlet in the evening. Installing lights would not only give skaters, bikers and scooters more time to ride, but it would also increase safety. Well-lit spaces reduce the chances of accidents and discourage negative activity that happens in the dark. Second, the skate park itself is showing its age. Cracks in the concrete, outdated features and worn down ramps make it harder for people to enjoy the park fully. Many nearby cities such as South Ogden and Clearfield have invested in modern skate parks that attract both locals and visitors. North Ogden has the same opportunity. Revamping the park with updated obstacles, smoother surfaces and more variety would make it a point of pride for the community. Finally, supporting this project means supporting the youth of North Ogden. Not everyone plays traditional sports and the skate park provides an inclusive environment where kids of all ages and backgrounds can challenge themselves, encourage each other and build confidence. By investing in the skate park, the city is investing in a, in a positive, healthy and creative outlet for its residents. All I ask is that you consider prioritizing lights and improvements at the North Ogden Skate Park. It's a small investment with a big impact, not just for skaters, but for the entire community. Thank you for your time and your commitment to making North Ogden a better place for all of us.
Any questions for Max? Councilmember Watson?
Not necessarily a question, but I just wanted to say thank you for coming and preparing that, um, as a youth especially. Um, it means a lot to us and we appreciate you being here and hearing your perspective. Um, I'm an advisor for the youth council and I'm always asking the youth council, hey, you got to speak up for what me, you, means important to you, what's important to you. And so it's really admirable that you do that. Also, one thing, I don't know if you know that Weber C T C is putting on a skate night event at our, you do know about that? Okay, great. There's going to be prizes. So for everyone here, it's on Monday, um, from six to eight P M. And um, there, it's going to be a, a great event with DJ and everything. So glad to hear you know, already know about it, but thank you for coming.
Thank you. That means a lot.
So, yeah, great uh, presentation, Max. So just a question so that uh, you, you understand how things work there. How would you propose the city pay for that, Max?
I don't know. Just get something together, maybe ask some people around or something. I don't, I don't really know how that works, but I've been talking with a couple of my buddies at that skate shop on twelfth street and some friends that work with more of the other cities around Utah. And they said, I should come here and propose an idea.
Yeah, you, you did a great job. Uh, would you and the group uh, be involved in maybe some type of fundraising to do these things in the?
I mean, we could, we could surely start one. I know a lot of people that skate and skateboard across the state, so I could probably get something started.
Well. Step up there, uh, if you wouldn't mind, please, up to the podium.
How much money would we need to raise to get lights?
You know, we'd have to determine that, what type of lights uh, we would need, um, you know, what the repairs are. We would, you know, we could have somebody take a look at it. I think the other thing we would encourage you guys to do, um, you know, things have got a lot better and thank you. But you know, we've had some real issues over there. Uh, at the park and you know, some, some questions may be asked about, you know, if we extend the hours at, at nighttime. So we surely rely on you guys to uh, take care of, of your park. It's, it's basically there. So, um, but we, we can find out kind of a rough estimate of what it would take and get that back to you. So Max, you want to check back with us and uh, since you're the spokesperson and we could at least tell you uh, what the estimated cost would be?
What do you think the estimate would be for, let's say, just how like the tennis court lights are, like not that big, obviously, but something like that, not as many of them, just enough to light up the park?
You know, I'm not very good at that, but we, we do have Dave Espinoza with us this evening. And, and Dylan, they're, they're kind of our lighting experts. What's a rough estimate on that, Mr. Espinoza?
Dang.
Nothing's cheap these days, Max, but uh, let us, let us think about it, see what's a possibility and uh, you know, maybe we can get the, the community involved, but I know, I don't think there's anything in the budget this year that I'm aware of. But uh, I would encourage you to uh, you know, we'll get a little bit better estimate there and uh, and see what the council's willing to do.
Can I add one thing?
Watson?
I know that the C T C who is throwing this event is always looking for ways to help sponsor different things, improvements. And if they see that this initiative that they have with um, the uh, the signs up at the park and this event that's happening, if they see a positive impact um, in their data because of this event, um, this campaign that they're doing, uh, they might have better data research that proves that we can keep putting more money into our parks. And so one thing that you could do, um, practical thing that you all could do is continue to tell your friends to keep it in good shape. You know, the vandalism, uh, whatever it is, if the data shows that um, these initiatives are working, then more money can be eligible for grants.
And Max, I think you had a good point that we should always remember is uh, the city does put money into recreation and not everybody plays sports. Uh, this is your sport. And so I think it uh, it's just a reminder that we need to be all inclusive. So, um, good presentation, some good points there and uh, we'll uh, we'll see if we can't shave a little off that seventy to a hundred thousand for you. How's that?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. Good work.
Uh, thank you for this opportunity for the public to come and talk with our city leaders. My name is Caitlin Stanley. Um, I am from Pleasant View, but I live right on the border of North Ogden. And today I want to talk, I want to petition city council for a crosswalk between the Cove Town Home Division next to the Rush Fundplex and Maria Montessori Academy. And I ha- I brought little, little uh, maps. I don't know if you guys need them or if you know, is that okay to pass these out? Thank you. Um, on this road I'm talking about is twenty-five fifty. Um, and between me and another family, we have two families represented up here. Uh, we are walking to and from the Maria Montessori Academy a couple of times a day with three or four little kids. Some of them are represented here today. And we are cross, yeah, very tiny children. All of them are very tiny. Um, and we um, often only have one adult amongst them because we switch off. And we're crossing, part of going to school is crossing twenty-five fifty and um, thank you guys for helping me out. Um, and we are crossing during the busiest time of the day. There are two schools on that road. There's um, Majestic Elementary. Oh, thank you for pulling that up for everyone. Um, and there's Majestic Elementary and then Maria Montessori Academy, and so there's a lot of traffic there and a lot of people are driving by. Um, so I, the day after the school started, I went out and bought myself a yellow, orange safety flag, an orange safety vest, uh, because I knew I wanted to signal very clearly to the drivers that we are now crossing the road. Um, and we've been okay so far, but it's always a nerve-wracking thing for me when I'm crossing with several children, young children. And I think a crosswalk would benefit more than just our families. It would benefit anyone north of twenty-five fifty who are crossing that road to visit friends' houses across the street, uh, to visit the North Shore Aquatic Center that's very popular in the summer as in addition to the Maria Montessori Academy. Um, so I am here tonight to brainstorm ideas of how we can make this safer for children to cross because we have a lot of young children in the Cove Town Home Complex. Um, and what I believe that a crosswalk would be a great solution for that safety option. Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. Uh, we have the two people here tonight that would be able to probably look into that. We have our police chief and our Public Works Director. And I can tell you that the council is very interested in making sure we have safe access to our schools for the kids. So what we will ask, we'll ask Mr. Call to work with Dave and our police chief to see if it's something that can be done, should be done, and then we can go from there. But thanks for bringing the awareness to us. But before you leave, let me see if the council has any questions.
Do you have any sort of guesstimate on how many people make that trek to school each day? Uh, it, I'm guessing Majestic probably has a crosswalk down that way.
Yeah, and, and that is signified by, I think it's the red on your maps.
Yeah.
That there is a crosswalk there.
Yeah, but that would be backtracking. I understand that.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a guesstimate for how many people in the Cove subdivision have to make that trek each day to school?
Um, I, I know that it's at least us and we go together, but I do know of a couple other families who will just drive because that's safer. They don't want to walk to, to the Montessori Academy. Uh, but during the summer, this conversation comes up a lot more with the North Shore Aquatic Center, that there are people who are afraid to crawl, to walk, so they're using their car more um, when we're easily walking distance. But I can get, I can ask around and get maybe a petition or some sort of numbers to maybe help with that.
One thing that we could also hopefully arrange is some kind of study that the police can, can count though. I know they've done that in the past, but just one idea. Um, but another thing that I wanted to point out is that I drive that road regularly because my students attend, some of my kids attend Majestic Elementary, and I know that there is a school speed zone over by Majestic, but there's not one over by Maria Montessori.
And I was actually going to comment on that. I do see, one of the concerns is I see a lot of phone usage in cars when I walk, and also the speeding up after they get out of Majestic Elementary because they're out of the school zone, so you're safe to speed up. Um, but again, we're walking right in the same times as Majestic Elementary, so it would be nice to maybe even stretch the school zone out a little bit more. I don't know. Yep.
Uh, Councilmember Barker, did you have a comment?
Just real quick, are you wanting, proposing at the end of the sidewalk, you'd like a crosswalk?
Yeah, there's not an actual great sidewalks up there, and that's about the end of our sidewalk. That would be a perfect place to, we would love a side, a crosswalk right there.
That, yeah. Have you approached Pleasant View? Because that's actually in Pleasant View City.
Okay, that's good to know. I can approach Pleasant View about that.
I mean, we're right on the border.
It is the trifecta.
Harrisville.
This is Pleasant View, and this is Harrisville.
That's right.
So it's like the four corners, it's the three corners.
Okay. So I guess if we wanted something a little further to the east, that would be in your jurisdiction. Okay. I just didn't know if there's a rule about it being too close to another crosswalk, since we do have that one across from Majestic, um, and if we needed to scoot it a little more east. I guess I could talk, yeah, is, do I have, uh, can I just get the names, I guess, after of who I can contact?
He's, he's right there.
This orange shirt, okay, great.
That's our police chief.
Okay.
Chief Rainan, and that's Dave Espinosa.
Okay, thank you. I can follow up with him after this then.
Maybe all three cities could do something together for once.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks for making us aware of that. Surely, safety for our kids is, is really important. So thank you so much. Any other public comments? Julie?
Julie Anderson, North Ogden. Um, I want to address these amazing kids before they go out. I am actually the chair of the Weber CTC. So I've been working with our youth council on this event for Monday night. I really encourage you guys to come. They are having a competition, a 12th Street, is it Crossroads?
Yeah.
They are coming. Um, and so I would recommend you come because both our coordinators and myself will be there so we can talk about putting lights on it. As you know, we're putting a mural on the wall um, with positive messaging for you guys because this is what our youth wanted. I hope everyone can hear me because I'm kind of turned funny. Um, this is what our youth wanted, is they wanted the park to be not looked as a negative, but as a positive place for you kids to be. And so you guys being there would be awesome. And I think it would also, addressing the city council, maybe this is something we can look to with ramp grants to see if we can get it. But I know the CTC and the youth would be thrilled to have you there and to have this conversation. I, I'm sorry I didn't hear your presentation, but I would love to have you guys there so that we can address that and see how we can work together. Okay?
That's a good point, Max, since you're the spokesperson. Uh, there are grants from Weber County, ramp grants. It takes some matching, whether it's labor or money, et cetera. So there's, there's options. So.
And that might be where Weber CTC can step in with maybe some matching funds or something like that.
So there's your lady right there.
So, yes. My name is Julie Anderson. So look for me Monday night. I will be there. And both our coordinators who run the program will be there as well. So I just wanted to let these guys know before they left. We are there for them. We want it to be a positive experience for them.
Okay, thank you. You guys aren't going to stay for the remaining two hours, I take it, huh? Have a good evening. Appreciate you coming. Yep.
Sandy Cochran, North Ogden. Um, I just wanted to make a quick comment on the agenda item for using culinary water at Jordan Park. That's something I would be opposed to. I can remember a few years back when we had water restrictions and, and the residents were told if they used culinary water, since they were told not to, they would either, I don't remember exactly what it was, but it was either large fines or huge increases in the cost. And so I would not be in favor of that. I think if you make an exception once, it becomes easier to keep making the exception, or it becomes easier for people to expect you to continue making an exception for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Brian Bartholomew. Also want to make a comment on number eight, but I was curious to see what the presentation went. Now, in full disclosure, I believe this is Barry sitting here. I've talked to you on the phone. I have lot number one in your subdivision under contract. Um, I'm also on the Board of Directors for Mountain View Irrigation, okay? Um, so the idea of using culinary water for outdoor use is, I'm going to agree with what Sandy said. I remember getting the notices as well that in a, in a low water year, you know, North Ogden doesn't have plenty of water to put on yards. And so I would not be in favor of that. Now, Barry, last time I talked to you, uh, you told me to keep my eye open for water shares out there, and I have been doing that. Uh, and there is water out there. Um, it's not easy to find, but it is there. Um, I would be open to having more discussions with you. In the, but it, Mountain View, we have discussed this subdivision substantially. Um, now even before Rick and you took it over, um, I was in talks with Tony Mook and the Champneys about this property, and water has always been an issue with this property. Okay, that's one of the reasons I didn't pursue it. But again, to the council, I would say the idea of using culinary water for this subdivision is a bad, uh, bad plan. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Phil Swanson, North Ogden resident. Glad to see you're not all glazed over from that URS presentation. I saw Mayor glazing over, so I figured, wow. Uh, I'm also here to talk about item number eight. The, and it's not just Jordan Park, it's any subdivision. Using our culinary water, which is, primary purpose is, put out fires. We can't be jeopardizing fire flow or anything like that. To use outdoor irrigation, our system was not set up to provide irrigation water. It was set up for culinary use only in the relatively limited uh, thousands, you know, through, I think it's three to six thousand gallons per home that gets used on a given month. That jumps to fifteen to twenty thousand when we're talking about irrigation. So it, it triples, quadruples the amount of water being used. And as was said by a couple others, if we do it for one subdivision, because it's easier and less expensive than securing some of the secondary water rights, uh, it will be the preferred route that will be requested in the future. So I'd urge you to say no, and, and then we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Anyone else this evening like to comment? Anyone online, John? Okay, we'll move on then to item number seven. Uh, Mr. Call, I believe you're going to lead this discussion regarding dog park location. Or has that been requested to be delayed?
Yeah, the, the citizen presenter had his work trip extended, and so he is asked to push it to the twenty-third. The council would be agreeable.
So do we have a motion to table this item?
Motion to table or postpone, whatever the correct verbiage is.
Postpone. You have a second to postpone?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? All in favor of postponing this to a future city council meetings, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, this will be postponed to a future meeting. Now move on to item number eight. Um, this is a discussion on the use of culinary water for outdoor irrigation in the Jordan Park subdivision. I think Barry, Gittleman is going to lead this presentation. So Barry, if you'd like to step up to the podium.
Thank you. John, did you want to walk through this, or you want me to?
I, I think go through your presentation, yeah.
Okay. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I am Barry Gittleman, the president of Hamlet Homes, and we are the owner of the Jordan Park subdivision, which we purchased from Rick Scadden about a year and a half ago and have started development but not completed it yet. After we purchased the property, we became aware that there was an issue with the secondary water, which we've been working diligently on solving for the last year and a half, or I guess the last year since we became aware of the issue. Um, most of the infrastructure is in place. Roads are not in yet. We've not connected sewer yet or secondary water. Uh, and we understand the North Ogden City requirement that culinary water and irrigation water be separate. And I understand that three people during the public comment spoke about the issue and are concerned about several things with it. Our presentation tonight is not asking for a vote from the city council. We just wanted to open the discussion, make the council aware of the issue, everything that we're doing to try and solve the issue. We do think that it should be a consideration as a last resort that uh, potentially using city culinary water for irrigation water with some conditions and restrictions should be on the table and considered, but we're trying to pursue all other options first. Uh, and just want to make everyone aware of how we ended up in this situation and everything we're doing to try and solve the issue to address the citizens' concerns. If the council decides in the future to make an exception to city policy, either temporary or permanently, it would be just for one subdivision of thirty-seven home sites. It's definitely not setting a precedent for anything in the future. As you all know, any decisions that you make are case by case unless you're changing city code or law, which is nothing that we're proposing or requesting. So on to the presentation, we just wanted to talk briefly about how we got here, what we're doing about it, and what we're proposing or asking for the discussion. How we got here, we purchased the land from Rick Scadden and his partner, partner in January of twenty-twenty-four. Uh, Rick is here and he can speak better than I can about the history, but he had worked out with Marriott Companies, uh, for the secondary water for the subdivision, and then Randy Marriott's untimely passing sort of threw everything into a jumble, and he's been working diligently to solve the issues since then. Uh, prior to those issues coming up, the city had, did approve preliminary plat, uh, and everyone marched forward, uh, in, you know, good faith that there would not be an issue, but then an issue became apparent in twenty-twenty-four. So we started development in the spring. The will serve letter had been provided, but after Randy's passing, it was not being honored, and so we had an issue with secondary water. We started working on that. Uh, if we could go to the next slide. I think everyone's aware of where Jordan Park is. That lower right southeast corner detention pond was where the helicopters were pulling the water from to put out the fire just a few weeks ago. And so our property is just to the north of Eric Thomas's property, and that detention pond is the southeast corner of our roughly rectangle-shaped property that is approved for thirty-seven home sites. On the next slide, that is our plat. We did just a couple of months ago, actually two months ago exactly, record the plat for the subdivision, and we have signed an agreement with the city acknowledging that it is our responsibility to resolve the secondary water issue. And the city was willing, because we're making good efforts along those lines, to allow us to record the plat, pull our first building permits, which we're expecting to do this week, finish the development, and we have signed an agreement that we understand no certificates of occupancy will be issued until the secondary water issues are fully a hundred percent resolved. So we acknowledge that's totally our responsibility. Um, so the plat was recorded in July. On the next slide, uh, we have essentially told all of the water companies in the area. We've spoken with North Ogden Irrigation, we've spoken with Pine View, we've spoken with Marriott Companies, we've met with the city. Uh, we have already spent money to purchase some water shares, and we're working on getting other water shares purchased. Part of the challenge that we have is that most of the water shares that are available, and I appreciate Brian Bartholomew mentioning that he's also looking uh, for us, and I'll speak with him about that too. Most of what's available are shares that can only be used below the canal, not north of the canal at the higher altitudes and elevations. And I understand that in North Ogden City, um, there have been issues in the past where some of the subdivisions that were at the higher altitudes and elevations, there has been a big challenge getting water service to those subdivisions. And this isn't the first time that that's come up. It's also, North Ogden City is not by any means the first city that is dealing with challenges of water availability. Uh, we live in a high desert, and there have been drought conditions going on for years, so that is an ongoing challenge and an issue. So we're continuing to work with all the water companies we can. The shares from Doug Hamblin, we have already purchased those and we have them. And I'm continuing to work with Kami Marriott about how her company might be able to service. But the shares that we've been able to purchase are from North Ogden Irrigation, which currently are available for use below the canal. We're also meeting with Pine View and North Ogden Irrigation about their attempts to modify and amend their bylaws so that their water companies can exchange water shares and allow and allow them to be used north of the canal. Those discussions are in the works between those water companies. The latest update I got from Jeff Humphries with Pine View was that the attorneys are working on the agreements to amend the bylaws. And no offense to John, but attorney documentation typically doesn't happen quickly. So we don't expect anything to get done in weeks. They've told us that it could be several months or a year or two. So that's in the works as well, but it could take a while. And so we're working on amending bylaws, we're working on getting water shares, we're working with the water companies on their agreements between each other. And so given this situation that we are continuing to spend money, put in the improvements, purchase water shares, and do everything that we can with the city, with multiple water companies and multiple landowners and owners of water shares. We've not been able to solve the issue yet. And it is a unique situation where we are benefiting the city by connecting Mountain Road to the north with existing Mountain Road to the south. And so improving connectivity in the area. Potentially, once we finish the improvements, there could be 37 more families that move into the city of North Ogden and enjoy the beautiful city and the views looking down over the valley. We think there are some benefits, either if the council is open on a temporary basis or potentially a permanent basis, to make an exception to the normal policy, because it's a small subdivision of just 37 home sites at a high elevation above, 5,000 feet above sea level. We are requesting to have this discussion about serving Jordan Park only with city culinary water, either temporarily or permanently. And we are also willing to put an HOA in place. Right now, there is none, but the HOA could take on the responsibility of enforcing water restrictions. Landscape requirements for Utah has, I believe it's called Waterwise, which is a program that drastically reduces the water used by the homeowners for irrigation. We're open to any and all of those possibilities, and taking that on as our responsibility for the homeowners and the HOA so that it's not a burden on the city. So those are our thoughts on how we got here and what we've been doing about it and the discussion we'd like to have. I believe Rick is here also, who can provide better history than I can, or I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Counsel, I believe Barry said he's not looking for a decision tonight.
Correct.
So we can postpone the agenda item, which is, I think, asking for a motion for the use of culinary water. So we can postpone that. I think Barry's just bringing to the council's attention.
Unless the council is fully in favor of it, in which case I don't mind a vote.
I don't think you'd want to vote tonight.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Barry from the council? One of the questions I have is, I think on an earlier slide, you said the secondary water was worked out. Was that a written agreement? Yeah, you can come up.
Rick?
I think it actually said the culinary was. Rick Scadden, by the way, 97 East, 3475 North. I think we had an agreement in place with Mr. Marriott before he passed. We were given will serve letters that had conditions listed on it. And I made some notes, and maybe I'll share some of those. Once he passed, the conditions changed. And we first received an email from Ms. Marriott of she could provide the water and she could accept North Ogden shares. She wanted 23 acre feet, which mistakenly, and honest mistake in her email, she stated that required 46 water shares. And that really sent us for a loop, because that's actually going the wrong way with the math. The math is it's two acre feet per share. So it would have been 11 and a half shares, which we have since corrected. As Barry mentioned, we arranged with a current owner of water, and Hamlet Homes has purchased five and a half shares of water at a substantial amount of money. I have 10 acre feet of water that I'm bringing into the product. So that gives us five additional shares, which puts us at 10 and a half shares. We are one share shy of meeting our requirements based on numbers we've discussed. And by the way, this is also the same number shared by Pine View Water. With that information, I do have an additional share lined up. And when we get an agreement in place, we're going to purchase that share. So we have the accounted water share requirements necessary to move forward. Once two water companies and a irrigation company can come together and put their agreements in place that allow for use of the water above the canal. And that's just a matter of changing the bylaws in North Ogden Irrigation. We're not here. I mean, you know, given the nature of my work, I could live anywhere from here to Box Elder to Davis County to Utah County. I have projects all along the Wasatch Front. And I choose to live here because I value this community and the importance of my family's comfort here and different things. And I really appreciate the leadership and direction this, the city, between the mayor and council have taken. This isn't a, this isn't a come in here and try and bell us out request in my eyes. And I'm sorry, Barry, if, because I'm speaking for Rick, not Barry at the moment. This was a situation we were put in mostly because of the untimely death of Mr. Marriott. And it's really thrown us for a loop, because in trying to solve it, like I say, first of all, the new leadership of the irrigation company come in, and we receive an email saying we need 46 water shares. Well, that 46 water shares would have been about $800,000, even if they were available to us, which they would not be at that number. We've since acquired the water necessary, and I believe we'll have an agreement shortly that will allow us to have a permanent, a permanent fix to the overall requirements for water for the area. I believe this ask is just a short term fix to allow us to get through to these agreements, where all these things can be in place. We can exchange our water shares for our required amounts and solve the problem. I just really want to say, and I appreciate Barry very much's patience to try and work through this. But we were put in a situation, and I believe even from the city level, the city was put in a situation because we had a different understanding of where this was at, at the time these decisions were made. I didn't come in here with no idea of how that was going to happen. You didn't approve a project with no plan in place. Unfortunately, someone's death has dramatically changed the narrative of the situation. And we're just trying to find that answer to move forward in which I believe, and I'm not speaking for Mr. Gilman here, I believe it to be a short term fix. By the time there's a home ready and a CO is ready to be issued, I believe we have a very strong chance, 75, 80% chance, these agreements will be in place. But the amount of money that's been spent and the effort on their part to move forward, I don't love the request, but unfortunately, we've been put in a bad place. And that bad place isn't, wasn't an intentional oversight. It wasn't intentional, just trying to slide this past somebody. It's a very valid unfortunate situation that we really don't have, didn't have control over. So for me, I know a lot of residents, and rightfully so. I respect their place and their comments. But we weren't put in this because we tried to slide something past somebody. We had our agreements. The agreements was a financial commitment, not water share commitment. It wasn't commitments of anything other than, well, I'll be honest with you. Our agreement was we'd pay $300,000 for the connections. The infrastructure's been installed. If culinary was granted for a short period of time, the infrastructure's there to be replaced with a full operating secondary water system. It's not like anything would have to be tore up and moved. It's all in place. The only thing missing is a connection. And those connections are driven by the fact of how do we get North Ogden Irrigation shares above the canal and allowed to be used? And I think we're close. I think the bylaws for North Ogden Irrigation are being, but as Barry mentioned, when legal contracts are involved, nothing moves quickly. It could be a few months. We could be, have this taken care of. It might take a year, but I do know everybody involved has the intent of making that happen. And our discussions and Mr. Bartholomew, I, being on the board, may be offended by this, but Pine View wants to take over that area for secondary water in the future, real near future, and they're working to that regard. So I do believe answers are coming. I do believe answers are viable. And I think it's a situation that will handle itself. It just needs some time. But we're asking, this ask is to allow them to move forward and not be wasting more money than they already have. And so, as I mentioned again, I'll say it again. I'm a resident of this town and a very proud resident of this town. And I want it to be successful, and I know there's big decisions to be made. However, we were put in a situation that no one saw coming, and we're just trying to work forward with resolve in a permanent fashion in the near future. But in the just real near future, maybe it's a stopgap for an allocation of water for maybe a sum. That's the way I'm seeing it, based on our discussions with others now. And if you...
I think, thanks, Rick. The only thing I would add to that is we've had a few meetings with the city manager and the city engineer. And to address the concerns of the citizens raised during the public comment, we would be willing to put water usage restrictions in place. I believe Mr. Swanson mentioned that in some neighborhoods, there's triple the usage for irrigation per home relative to the usage for culinary per home. And we're willing to put restrictions in place such that that is not the case in Jordan Park. We're willing to accept city water as a temporary solution only if required. And we're willing to accept an agreement that maybe it only applies for six months or 12 months, and then it expires, or it only applies for the first five homes. We're open for input from the citizens and the council. And we'd like the city to consider it. Like Rick said, if we can solve this with the water companies buying water shares in the next two to three months, then we have no request, and we won't be coming back to the council asking for a vote on anything. But we'd like to have this discussion now to get your thoughts and concerns so that we can address them if we do have to come back to you in three months, because the two water companies say they can't reach an agreement.
And I think maybe the approach on this council would be to get a recommendation from our city attorney. I've seen some things from our water folks. It sounds easy, but it's not. It's very difficult. It sounds like, you know, who takes on the risk if you're 75 to 80% sure you're going to get the water? Yeah, then there's probably no use for the city to be considering it. But we're willing to, with the information. I think if you've got the water, then you're in good shape. Yeah, well, water shares are good if they're perfected and they're senior. But shares are good, but water is better. The actual flow of water is better. So we'll, I think, counsel, unless you have any further questions for Rick or Barry, that we probably need to get further information to make a decision for the council. I think Barry's not asking for a decision tonight. He's just providing additional information. So that being the case, I would ask for a motion to postpone item number eight, which was recommended as a motion to use culinary water for outdoor irrigation in Jordan Park. Do we have a motion to postpone that?
Mayor, I want to make a motion that we postpone the discussion on culinary water to be used for Jordan Park subdivision.
Do you have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilmember Barker. Any further questions for Barry or Rick? John, you have anything else you'd like to talk to the council about?
No, I think that those are the three things that I'd consider. One is the permanent, one's the temporary, and then one is the outdoor restrictions. And if there's not another thing, then those would be the ideas that we'd explore in the coming while.
Yeah, I've never seen a temporary use of water, though, I must say. So let's hope, maybe working together, we can get some of these folks to move and recognize the water shares, and we're surely happy to help where we can. But we appreciate the information that's presented, and we'll see where things go from here. I, you know, it's interesting. I think it was brought up by one of the citizens that it sets a precedent, which obviously you mentioned in your presentation that there's a precedent. And that's the problem we get into, where does it, where does it all end? So, but we appreciate your attendance tonight, appreciate the additional information for the council to consider and consult with our city manager and attorney and our public works folks. It's very complicated to get water up the hill, believe me. So, okay?
Thank you, counsel.
All right. At this point in time, we have a motion. It's been seconded. All in favor of postponing, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. We'll move on now to our council reports. Councilmember Dalpas, did you have anything you'd like to inform the council and the citizens about regarding the police department?
Yeah, sure thing. Chief Inan sent me a list of items to cover. We have a new community service officer starting very soon, Lynn Green, on September 15th. We're glad to see the experience that they'll bring to our department. There is a Weber Fraternal Order of Police annual Officer Wellness Golf Tournament that's happening on September 12th at Ramuda Golf Course. And might I add, Ramuda Golf Course is one of the easiest golf courses in Weber County. So if you don't have very good golf skills, this will be a good opportunity. It's a fundraiser that is for officer wellness within Weber County. So very important, even though I was just joking. There are teams that are still available. So if you are interested, please get in touch with our chief of police, Brian Inan. Also, this has been touched upon, but it's not going to hurt to mention again, we have the Community That Cares event that is being hosted at the skate park here in North Ogden. That's going to be September 15th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Interesting fact on this is that one of the members of our police department will be the judge for the competition. So everyone in the community is invited to attend. And I was personally touched by these youth that came and presented their situation with the park. That had to have been really difficult for the spokesperson to get up here. And even though he had it all typed up and ready, it takes some courage to get in front of... it takes some courage to get in front of adults and make your thoughts known. So I appreciate them. And that is my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Dalgaz. Councilmember Barker, would you like to report?
Barks? Yes. Jamie texted me earlier and said, basically, right now, they're trying to do a whole bunch of maintenance on all their parks. They've lost all their seasonal employees as they return back to school. So they're doing the best they can with mowing and getting the soccer fields ready to be used.
Okay. Scott did text me a report on building and planning. And I'll try to fill in for Councilmember Severing. This year, we've had sixty-nine building permits. And John, I think we've understood the importance of reporting those to the population committee so that we can get some credit for population growth instead of decreasing. There are six townhome building permits in the Freedom Court's townhouse development that continues to grow. Northview Phase Nine is building out at a good pace. We talked about the approval for that this evening. And Views at Rockwood is back pulling more building permits. So the city continues to grow. In planning, there's a preliminary approval of Barker's Haven Single Family Subdivision. That's over by Barker Park, I think just east of the LDS Chapel that's over there. So that's preliminary approval has been given for the first phase of that, which is twenty-two lots. Preliminary approval of Orchard Bend, which is the West States annexation that was approved some time ago. That's a multifamily subdivision, I think, that has forty-nine units that requires, I think, twenty percent required occupancy is my recollection. Scott has reported that Tri-City Exchange, the code compliance meeting number two is complete with additional timeframes and expectations set for the property owned to come into compliance. And council, it's probably time to stand firm on getting that in compliance. It's surely a good thing, but once again, exceptions set precedence, right? And so they're working on that. And Barker Depot, a commercial area, continues to develop with the tenant improvements for the drive-through businesses beginning soon. I think they're moving along there. I saw them putting some trusses on today. I believe, John, the first three occupants there are Mobetas, Wingstop, Jersey Mikes, and Pilates for those who need to relax and do Pilates.
That's correct.
That'll be the first occupancies in the buildings there. So that's the report that I received from Mr. Hess on behalf of Councilmember Severing. At this point in time, are there any further public comments? Oh, Scott, I didn't see you there. Good to have you here. Sorry about that.
You just thought he was a skater kid.
Yeah, well, he's a biker, I know that. Mr. Bartholomew, would you like to comment? Please state your name again.
Yeah, Brian Bartholomew. I just wanted a couple follow-up comments about the Jordan Park subdivision. Again, I'm on the board with Mountain View Irrigation. We have multiple projects exactly like this. When they don't quite have enough water, they're trying to resolve it. So this is not a new thing. Any development up there behind the cove, north of the cove? Well, north of the cove has water because it's Kami Marriott. But there's other projects coming down that don't have water. Now, the will serve letter is simply a letter that says, "We, the company, will maintain and service this after the project is done." They never brought water to Mountain View yet, okay? So that's on them. This is a rookie mistake that they made. But we actually had them connected. They said they were going to bring the water, "we" meaning Mountain View Irrigation. They never brought the water, so we disconnected them. The HOAs can't force water usage. You can put it in there. But on these homes, they're going to be one to two million dollar homes, a couple hundred bucks extra that you charge for over-usage is all it is. But it's a policing issue. The HOA is not going to police it. It's going to fall on North Ogden or it's going to fall on Mountain View Irrigation. And we already have that issue of policing for over-usage. But if they're saying they've got, you know, twenty-two of the twenty-three shares, they're close. They'll get that solved. But yeah, the biggest thing is this is not the only project that Mountain View Irrigation is dealing with. And it's not the only project that's going to have this issue in the next five to ten years. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Brenda Ashdown, I live in North Ogden. I was debating on whether to say anything or not. I appreciate that these young men came today and asked for what they did. I have no problem for what they're asking for. But my concern is younger kids have a really difficult time using the skate park because of the language and the demeaning behavior. I'm wondering if, I don't know how it would be policed, but if there could be a time where younger kids could use it where the older kids weren't there? Or, I don't know. But that's a huge, that's a huge concern for me. I've watched several kids from the elementary school because, you know, they get out. But junior high is already there and the kids can't use it. They're afraid of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Anyone online, John?
No raised hands.
Anyone else like to comment this evening? Okay, we'll move on to item number eleven. Let's start with staff. Scott, do you have anything further? Chief? Anyone? Dave?
No, we don't want this to go long.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you very much. John?
No.
Ryan? All right, council.
Bye-bye, birdie. This weekend starts tomorrow night and next weekend. It's a good show. If you've ever seen the, the play is better than the movie, if you've ever seen the movie. So come and have some fun.
John, two things. Could you remind them that the park closes at ten o'clock?
Yep.
And also, it's the same issue I think we had with Newsies. And I know that they've got to do sound checks and stuff. But could you ask them to kind of watch the sound while they're practicing? But I believe the other night, they were down there way past eleven o'clock, eleven-thirty. Teenagers in the park. And once again, you know, if we're going to enforce a ten o'clock closure, we need to be consistent in our application. So, okay? Anything else, John, a third thought or anything of that nature? Okay, Ryan, go ahead.
I just wanted to announce that on the website, there is now an availability to sign up for notifications when agendas are posted. It's kind of a little funky because you'll click that and then you have to wait for an email to approve it before those newsletters will, or not newsletters, agenda notifications will start coming. But we've got that set up now. It's on the Agenda and Minutes page. So I encourage everybody to sign up for those notifications.
Thank you, Ryan. Anyone else? I have nothing further to discuss. So we look for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.